Thank you. Good evening. This is Chair Hamalata Dandakar. And I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Deputies City Clerk Kevin Crispin, will you please call?
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Khan.
Here.
Commissioner Quincy. Commissioner Shoresman.
Commissioner Shoresman is here, but her mic might be off.
Yeah, she's not able to hear us. Let's see if we can get that happening. Looks like she's working on it. Let me continue with the role. Commissioner Wilken.
Here.
Vice Chair Jorgensen.
Here.
Chair Dandakar.
Yes.
All right, we're going to circle back to Commissioner Shoresman. Looks like she's talking, so I believe that she can hear us.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Michelle. Shoresman is here.
One of my pairs of headphones doesn't seem to work with go-to meetings. Sorry about that.
That's weird.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that commissioners are present through teleconferencing. I'd like to remind my fellow commissioners and staff to help us reduce background noise by muting your phone or microphone unless you're speaking. Thank you. The first order of the meeting is the acceptance of the agenda. The minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of June 10, 2020. If anybody has comments on the minutes before us, please unmute your microphone and identify yourself. All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
Have we checked to see if there's anyone that wants to make public comment?
On the minutes?
Yes. This is Roy Hamley speaking.
Are there any members of the public who would like to make comments on the minutes of June 10, 2020?
This is Deputy Clerk Christian. I see no hands up. I see no questions typed. And hold for one moment. I'll check, see if any new messages have come in. I don't see something on the minutes, but I have a note from Commissioner Quincy. It appears I'm going to be sending him a meeting invite. So he should be joining us soon. You can, you can go ahead and continue with your, your vote on this as I send Commissioner Quincy an invite to this.
Thank you. Commissioner is not hearing any, any comments on the minutes. Or do I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Wilken. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 10.
I'll second it. This is Commissioner Shoresman.
So I will the Deputy City Clerk, please call the role of the motion.
Commissioner Wilken.
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy. Sorry, he's not in yet. Vice Chair Jorgensen.
Yes.
Chair Dandakar.
Yes.
I'd like to make suggestion that we take a five-minute break before we have the presentation so that we can try to get Commissioner Quincy on board at this point. If the Chair and Commissioner are okay with that.
It sounds good to me. We all having technical problems, so let's try and see if we can help Commissioner Quincy to join the group.
Perfect. For all in attendance, I'm going to pause the webinar at this point. While I work with Commissioner Quincy.
Just so my fellow commissioner knows, when I turn this way, I have another computer over here. So if ever I look over here, I keep my support documents over here. And I go back and forth, so that's why you see me turn all the time. You don't think I don't like you?
I was taking it personally, Steve.
I was just curious about the technology. Can each commissioner turn on and off the microphone yourself, or do you have to be turned on and off by Kevin?
I'm muting and unmuting right now.
The panelists can do it.
There is a mute and unmute button. There's a little picture of a microphone. And you should be able to kind of just click on that little picture of the microphone. And it should show you that it's got, when it's muted, it's got a little, a little picture of a microphone that's red with a, with a strike through, through it.
It's when they're on teleconferencing like this, there's no chit chat. When there is the wall, we tend to chit chat during these little breaks.
Think I found this little dead time, if you use it all, at least during the workday. I make up so much extra time in those little, those little normal chit chat times, putting it into catching up on a couple emails. It saves so much time down the road, but that's, I think I'm guilty of that, trying to do that all the time now, is constantly being hyper-focused on efficiency, because, you know, and now during meetings, you know, people can't necessarily see you, so you can be answering emails when you're not, when it's something you don't have to report out on, or it's not relevant information. Get a cheat, cut corners a little bit there sometimes, I guess.
Well, like I started to say, I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person.
Me too. Anyone have any idea of when we're gonna all be, I'll be back yet? Has anyone heard anything?
Yeah, actually, this is Michael Codron. Just a little bit of information as a follow-up from last meeting. I checked in with Teresa about other options since the, this platform, this go-to webinar platform's limited to six cameras. And there are no other options for us at the moment. And, you know, other, a lot of other platforms were evaluated, but this is the one that we've gone with and invested in and trained up on. So there isn't something else that we can shift to. And the hope is that this is for two more meetings, but it's hard to predict exactly the when. But our, in our stage three of the recovery, we would be able to have in-person meetings. And it would be likely a hybrid where you'd have some folks participating remotely and some folks onsite and in person. So that's about as much detail as I, as I have on that. And, and we'll just, you know, every day there's new news, so we'll just keep watching and let the commission know when to expect that we'll be back in person at least partially.
Thank you.
If I were to take off my planning commissioner hat for a second and put on my public health hat, I would think that the, the main issue, it would be, it would probably be fine for us under the state stay-at-home order for the seven of us to be in the same room. But the, the public participation component would probably be the difficult part. I think the seven of us could, for example, be in the city hall chambers, you know, six feet apart, but to have the public participation, that's the part where it gets complicated.
Absolutely, and, and I imagine that attendance would be limited. And, and that would be the reason that we would run it as a hybrid to make sure people could participate remotely. And we wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't really think that all seven of you would want to be up on the dais. To, just, so there may be people that prefer to participate remotely, and we'll just kind of cross that bridge when we come to it. But if you want to continue to participate remotely, we're working to make that option available.
For sure. My thoughts were, you know, knowing what that room looks like, having three to four people on the dais, and then others maybe scattered at some of the other computers or, or workstations in the room. But then those aren't necessarily on camera, so I could see how that could be complicated.
Gotcha.
Well, it's good to know I'm not the only one who has technical difficulties with this system.
Yeah, it's quite the, quite the difficulty taking this long.
Yeah. Got me very comfortable with the other system using Zoom. And I was on it for nine hours a day, three times a week, when classes were in session and never had a good.
Too much. Are you doing anything extra with your time now that you're not in class anymore?
Finishing up research reports, so. In the morning.
Never, oh man, never really stops, does it?
It's my students and I presented before the Santa Clara Planning Commission.
City of Santa Clara?
No, county.
County, yeah. I used to work for the city of Santa Clara, so I was. Okay.
But they, they were using Zoom, and so you could see 25 people that had access. They could keep certain, they kept about 30 or 40 people without access. You couldn't see them, but they could see you.
Hi, this is Deputy Clerk Christian. I think that we have Commissioner Quincy on the line. You want to give us a test, Nick?
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Okay, awesome.
Yes, we can.
I don't think I ever got the link to join the meeting, so I'm very sorry.
Well, we're sorry too. I'm, that, we'll check our process and try to make sure that doesn't happen again. I am going to unpause the meeting and we can go forward, just to catch you up. Commissioner Quincy, the minutes have been approved and we're about to go into item number two.
And before I do, do go take us to item two, I want to make the statement for the public that at this time, we will have the comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Items raised are generally referred to staff. And if action by the commission is necessary, they may be scheduled for future meetings. As, as you, participants on the webinar may submit a question if you wish at this time. Please give your name and the number that you wish to speak on. Once the comments for the item is open, your microphone will be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak on agenda items. Deputy City Clerk, did we receive any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Let me check one more time. I see no questions. And we have no raised hands and no emails. So nope, you are good to proceed.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Any court challenges to the actions taken on public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to considering only those issues raised at the public hearing or submitted in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo at or prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Consultant and project presentations are limited to six minutes. We, we will now go to item two on the agenda. The public hearing item before us is to review a project located at 1141 Ellis Street. It's a residential structure of about 3,500 square feet on a sloped lot with a ADU of around 967,000 square feet. The project includes requested exemptions from the hillside development standards of the zoning regulations. It's requesting exemptions on two aspects. Building walls to exceed 15 feet in height and to allow retaining walls of up to 12 feet in height. Would Assistant Planner Kyle Van Luwen please present the report?
All right, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Let me get the controls over from the Deputy City Clerk. Are those in my control now?
They're in your control now.
Okay. Thank you, Ham, for introducing the item. We'll go ahead and get started right with the staff presentation. Somehow I got muted again. Sorry about that. Staff's upfront recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the community development director's approval of the single-family residential project on a slope lot, including the exceptions requested in the medium-density residential zone, subject to finding conditions. Kevin, I keep getting muted when I want to change the.
I'm not sure why that's happening.
Okay, we'll continue. And PC's purview is to review the project in terms of consistency with the general plan, zoning regulations, and applicable city standards. The project site is located on Ellis Street. It is a flag lot located just below Terrace Hill Open Space. This is a neighborhood comprised primarily of R2 zone properties. The project is a three-story, single-family structure, about 3,500 square feet in size with a 967-square-foot accessory dwelling unit and four-car garage. It is on a lot about 11,600 square feet. It's a flag lot with a slope over 20%. The requested exceptions to zoning regulations are to allow for portions of the downhill walls to be taller than 15 feet and retaining walls above six feet in height. This is just kind of initial view of the project, get some bearings. The issues raised by the appellant are four issues. They state that the project should be designated to be entirely consistent with the development standards, with no exceptions granted. That building code standard J11.6 has not been considered in consideration of the project. That standard does limit the amount of area that can be developed or graded on a slope plot. Next, that a feasible alternative and practical way for the project to comply with development standards is to adjust the size of the structure. And the denial of the exceptions would not deprive the property owner of reasonable use of the property as stated in finding seven. In response to the concerns raised, I think it's important to start with the language provided by the general plan. As much of the other standards and guidelines for hillside development are derived from the general plan goals and policies. The general plan section on hillside development states that the reasons for the standards and policies are to protect and preserve scenic hillside areas and natural features that function as landscape backdrops. The general plan section goes, also provides some development standards to aid in that goal. And these include statements to keep a low profile and conform to the natural slopes, avoid large continuous walls or roof surfaces, minimize grading on individual lots, generally locate houses close to the street, minimize the grading of visible driveways. The project's consistency with these policies and standards is aided by the fact that the, nearly the entire first floor of the structure is proposed below existing grade. This allows for the project to keep a lower profile with the second floor foundation stepped back following the natural slope. The project also locates the house close to the street and avoids placing building mass further up the slope. This also minimizes the grading and visibility of the driveway, which is placed low on the site. Primary mass of the structure is located low enough on the slope to have the building elevation of the rear property, from the rear property line, show as the tops, show only the top story of the building as seen in the lower picture there. Zoning regulations also provide standards for hillside development. The purpose of this zoning regulation section is, again, to provide, to protect and preserve scenic hillside areas and natural features that function as landscape and backdrops. The same as the general plan. And section repeats that purpose as the, the purpose is to protect the city scenic setting. Zoning regulations includes objective standards to help execute this stated purpose, providing standard limits on retaining wall heights and standard limits on height of downhill building walls. Stating that walls should be no more, building walls should be no more than 15 feet in height. And additional wall heights provided above 15 feet should be stepped back an additional 10 feet. The hillside section also provides that exceptions to the standards can be granted under certain findings. And next slide's not going.
You, you can also move slides far on your keypad or your.
Okay, here we go. This slide shows two aspects of the project that do not meet those specific standards. The building wall on this portion of the building is taller than 15 feet from existing grade. And the retaining wall is over six feet to facilitate an egress window on the portion of the building that is below existing grade. If no exceptions for building wall heights and retaining walls could be approved, an alternative placement of the structure that would be consistent would likely end up being placed like the one shown here in the yellow boxes, higher on the property, with no egress windows requiring retaining height, high retaining walls, and each four step back 10 feet. A structure placed like this would have a higher profile against the scenic backdrop of Terrace Hill and be located with mass further from the street. This is less consistent or even inconsistent with the general plan language for hillside development. This slide is a visual representation of the findings made in support of the exceptions, which states in part that no feasible alternative would result in a better implementation of the zoning regulations or general plan policies. And that setting the upper stories further back would require expanding the foundation to an area further up the hillside. And again, okay.
Hey, Jason, it's Kevin.
See if we can get to that next slide. Okay. What I got that, this slide shows the site plan and footprint of the building with the yellow block showing where portions of the structure could be located. Also, that would be in compliance with those zoning regulation standards, further up the slope and further away from the street at an elevation that would be more easily seen against the backdrop of Terrace Hill. This slide also shows the overhead view of the only other flag lot on this section of Ellis Street, seen in the upper right-hand corner, which is developed with a single-family residence of comparable size to the residents in this project. A picture of the residence is also shown on this slide. And it shows downhill-facing walls that are three stories in height, which the foundation, with a foundation higher on the site against the backdrop of Terrace Hill than the current proposal would be. As it relates to finding seven of the director's approval, reasonable development of the project site would be one of similar square footage and size, especially more consistent with general plan policy, which direct structure be kept low profile on the hillside. Again, here are the primary elevations of the structure. The lower left corner of these two pictures, can't totally see it there, but it's there, shows where the other visible retaining wall requested exception is located. And this exception allows for the driveway to be consistent with both standards specific to driveways on hillside lots. This also shows the stairway that is taller than 15 feet. This feature aids in compliance with other inside standards and policies, such as avoiding large continuous walls, providing horizontal and vertical articulation to create shade and shadow, and the breaking up of the building forms. All of these aspects, of course, were discussed by the ARC at their hearing, which did recommend approval of the project. In response to the phone's question about the applicability of building code J11.6, the building code clearly states that the grading approved in conjunction with an entitlement consistent with general plan policies and other hillside standards is not subject to limitations of this building code section. So the four appeal responses are that the project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and zoning regulations, which are aided by the exceptions requested. Building code J, standard J11.6 will not apply to the project. The entitlement establishes the project's consistency with hillside goals and policies. Other feasible or practical design options would not necessarily result in a better conformance with the intent of the regulations, and reasonable use of the property is one that is consistent with similar properties in the neighborhood. And again, staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the community developments' design review approval of the residents. That concludes staff presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
I'd like to call upon the planning commission members in alphabetic order for questions and comments. Commissioner Hopkins.
No questions.
Commissioner Jobinson.
No questions.
Commissioner Khan.
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner Quincy.
No questions.
Commissioner Schorsman.
I have one question. I did talk to Kyle for a while today, and I appreciate your help, Kyle, understanding a lot of this. I do have one additional question. I see in the table, there's a note in the packet on page five, where it talks about the total number of parking spaces proposed and allowed slash required. It looks like with this particular house, they've proposed four parking spaces. I'm unclear as to what that three allowed or required means. Is it allowed or is it required? And is there any conflict with what is allowed or required by the fact that there are four?
Sure, so a single-family residence of up to four bedrooms does require two parking spaces, and it is a pretty standard condition that flag lots provide one additional parking space for guests. So the required number of parking spaces for this project would be three spaces.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wilkin.
No questions.
Kyle, and so I'm next. Kyle, on sheet 12, when you showed us the option that would cause the design to be higher, that is then going to four stories. The section showed not three stories, but four stories, correct? Is that because they can't get the required square footage on the upper two stories?
No, this is showing that if, you know, for the project proposed, they really did sink that entire first floor below the grade, and so you're not necessarily required to sink or put your first floor, so it would be a three-story structure, just that that first floor would start potentially higher on the structure. Or higher on the slope, I should say.
I see. Thank you. Are there any public comments? Deputy City Clerk, could you please read any public comments that have been received?
Sure, let me double-check everything. At this time, I don't see... Oh, I'm sorry, you were asking if there was any comments that came in past the deadline?
Correct.
Okay.
Comments. Commissioners have received, the written comments received, right? We don't need to read those.
There's, no, no, but there's, we do accept comments past the deadline that makes it to you, and we have not received any written comments beyond that, that need to be read into the record.
Okay, thank you. So the floor is open for commissioners' deliberations.
This is Commissioner Wilkin. Is there a presentation from the applicants on this project?
Yes, there's, this is Deputy Clerk Christian. At this point, we should have two presentations. The first presentation should come from the appellant, because this is an appeal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle. And they should have 10 minutes to give their presentation, and then the applicant has the ability then to have 10 minutes for their presentation. And both the appellant and the applicant have the right to divide their time up for a total of 10 minutes, so they can, you know, hold back a couple of minutes for rebuttal if they choose to do so. We need to know that in advance so that we can time it. And once those presentations are made, then it will be open for public comment in general, if there's anybody that wants to comment verbally, and then it'll go back to the commission for deliberation. That's clear. No questions? All right, I am going to ask... I'm going to take the show back from Kyle. That's where we should be, correct, Kyle?
I believe that's correct.
All right. And then, can you introduce the appellant, and I will turn on his microphone?
Okay, the appellant will be Stephen Goschke, who is with the neighbor of the project site.
And Mr. Goschke, it appears that you may have your microphone muted. There you go. You should be good to go now, Mr. Goschke. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and city staff. My name is Stephen Goschke. I live at 1131 Ella Street. My wife and I are both Cal Poly graduates and have lived in the county since 1988. She teaches in the biology department at Cal Poly. I am a registered professional engineer with the state of California. I spent many years working at and managing the Morro Bay Power Plant, and after it closed in 2014, I was hired as the utility engineer at the Firestone Walker Brewery. We are here this evening asking you to support our appeal of the community development director's decision and deny the building permit for 1141 Ella Street. As I stated in my filed written appeal, I am asking the planning commission to review whether it is appropriate for the community development department to permit two downhill building wall exceptions, including one that is 28 feet high, where the standard is 15 feet, and three retaining wall exceptions, including one that is 12 feet high, where the standard is six feet, and an entitlement that would allow the builder to not be subject to hillside development standard J101.6. This standard delineates grading restrictions based on the steepness of the hillside parcel. I do not know if you have visited the proposed construction site, but hopefully you were able to stop by and look at it firsthand prior to the meeting. Better yet, I hope you attempted to walk to the top of the site, as that is the best way to get a true feel for the steepness and nature of this parcel. From the outset, I have been perplexed about why the community development department would permit extensive and numerous exceptions to allow construction on a relatively small and very steep, sensitive hillside parcel. The exceptions granted by the community development department are not minor. The city standards require downhill walls to be less than 15 feet. A minor exception to me would be 16 feet or maybe 18 feet. Here, the community development department allowed two major exceptions. One downhill wall will be 24 feet, and the other downhill wall will be 28. These walls are almost twice as high as the standard. A 28-feet downhill wall is quite large. These are not small walls. Not only does the community development department's decision authorize the construction of a structure that fails to comply with the city's design guidelines, zoning standards, and building codes, allowing these exceptions and entitlements here creates precedent. If a 12-foot retaining wall is authorized here, what is to keep subsequent developers from seeking and receiving approval for similar exceptions and entitlements for their development? In preparation for this hearing, I watched the city council meeting governing the appeal of the mixed-use development at 545 Higera, 486 March Street. I was struck by the fact that three out of the four council members specifically mentioned how the project developer, who I think was 10 over, had not requested any exception, and that their proposal was entirely designed within the community design guidelines, zoning regulations, and building codes for that parcel. The council specifically said that they were able to support the project because it was completed and complied with all the rules. This seems to be in stark contrast to the position of the community development department and the position they are taking for this proposed development. The citizens of San Luis Obispo spend a lot of time thoughtfully developing and democratically approving the community development guidelines, the zoning regulations, and the building codes. The community development department was created to be a steward and caretaker of these, making sure applicants adhere to and follow the approved rules. Why have these rules in place if set substantial exceptions are permitted? The first staff report on this development stated that the hillside had a slope of 19.6%. Having researched this in the past, I knew that in a previous building application for this very same parcel, the community development department at that time calculated the average cross-slope of the lot as being between 27 and 31%. The community development department at that time also stipulated the zoning code J106 applied. Now, a new 2020 building permit is applied for on the very same parcel, and the current community development department calculates a much lower average cross-slope and determines that zoning code J106 does not apply. The slope of the hill has not changed. I asked the current community development department to please share with me their average cross-slope calculation. They have not shared it and still haven't shared it with me to this date. The only thing that they have done is raise the calculated percent slope. At the ARC review hearing for this project, the staff reported, the staff report said that the cross-slope was 22%. In this staff presentation to you tonight, it is listed many times in the report at various percentages, but finally, way back on page eight, they admit that the slope is approximately 26%. Still less than what I and previous community development department staff have calculated, but closer to the truth. Staff has not explained how the cross-slope has increased from the original staff report, nor has staff explained how the slope has decreased from prior community development department calculation. The community development department only explains that change in calculation by saying that all that matters is the slope is over 20%. To me, however, it is more than that. It's about being truthful and factual. What about the grading requirement that was applied to the 2005 building permit request? Why is there no mention of it in the previous staff report? Why was it not mentioned to the ARC commission reviewed during that meeting? The answer I received was the community development department only has to disclose exceptions, not entitlement. That also struck me as being less than truthful, and it seemed like facts were being concealed that decision-makers, like you and the ARC, should rightly know and incorporate into their decision-making process. I believe it should be clear to all parties, when the community development department bestows exceptions to the rules, regardless of whether there are exceptions or entitlements, everybody needs to be aware of them. I have asked for an explanation of the difference between an exception and an entitlement, and I still have not received a satisfactory answer on that. I have asked for an explanation why you have to divulge granted exceptions but not granted entitlement. I have not received a satisfactory on that either. What is the process for granting an entitlement? If the entitlement is ensure that they follow hillside standards, then why are they exempt from the regulation? This seems to me to be a very circular argument. The community development department has frequently pointed to another nearby flag lot where there is a residence, no auxiliary drilling unit. They pointed to this other residence to support the development proposal at 1141 Ella. This residence apparently has features that would be outside the current zoning regulations and building codes. I do not know if that house was approved before the current rules were in place, or if the features are minimally or substantially over the current standards that they are for 1141 Ella. But it seems to me that this other house should have little bearing on the decisions about what occurs at 1141 Ella. It makes no sense to compare the proposed development to a single other development in the neighborhood. It is likely that there are other homes in the neighborhood that have not required exceptions. Maybe the community development department should compare the proposed development to all the homes in the neighborhood. Using the logic that it is fine-to-wake standard for 1141 Ella, if there is something sort of similar down the street, is like saying it's okay for someone to drive significantly over the speed limit, since the guy down the street did it once. In both cases, the same question applies. Why have guidelines, zoning regulations, and building codes if you are going to just grant exceptions and entitlements? I'm sure there are many places in the city and county where a home and an ADU, like the one proposed at 1141 Ella Street, could be built without the need for any exceptions or entitlements. To build these structures as proposed at this particular site requires numerous exceptions and an entitlement. You are the oversight body to the community development department. You and the community development department are responsible for ensuring that the community development guidelines, zoning regulations, and building codes are followed. I realize that the flag lot at 1141 Ella is not zoned vacant, but it is also not zoned "build whatever you want." Reasonable use of the property in the case of new development may include less development. I appealed this project to the planning commission because of the numerous sizable exceptions that were granted and because of the significant entitlement that was granted. As the oversight body of the community development department, as their boss, this planning commission is the ultimate guardian of the fundamental principles codified in the community design guidelines, zoning standards, and building codes. I ask you to support my appeal of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Deputy Clerk Christian, just for the record. The appellant has one minute remaining, should he wish to hold that for possible rebuttal for the record. Next, we would hear from the applicant. Kyle, can you introduce who's going to speak on that, and I will turn their mic on?
Yeah, the applicant's representative and architect is Thomas Esser, TJ Esser, and I believe he will be providing the presentation for the applicant.
Great. Mr. Esser, I believe that we have your mic turned on now.
Can you hear me?
We got you, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. The landowner at some point would like to maybe add a message, and they're not here verbally today, but I'm hoping that they can type in their comment later. They have an introduction about who they are, just so we know who people are, and that this is for a family. Let me know when my presentation is set up on the screen.
One moment, thank you for the reminder. I'm going to give the presentation back over to Kyle, and we will be able to get going on that. Kyle, you should have that now.
Next slide, please. That is the applicant in the back, DDA Beatrice Cop, and they've been San Luis Obispo residents since 2002, San Luis Obispo County residents, and they've been looking for a property to build their home on for quite some time, and they're looking to retire, and they found this lot that was supporting their lifestyle, but also in terms of allowing for an ADU so that their son-in-law and daughter could live there as well. So that's the reason for the ADU. Next slide, please. I just want to take a very quick, first walk-up Ella Street, so you know what's going on there. Next slide, please. It is a very eclectic neighborhood comprised of very large complexes, apartments, 16-unit complexes, condominiums, single-family homes, guest homes, ADUs, triplexes, and duplexes. Next slide, please. It's worth noting that every one of these homes, if they were It's worth noting that every one of these homes, if they were built today, would require more than one hillside development standard exception, either for face of wall like we are applying for, or retaining walls. And all of them, if they were built today, would be exempt from the J101.6 grading standard. Next slide, please. Here's an example that the appellant mentioned earlier, and this project is three stories tall. I would dare say three and a half stories tall as a result of the large vaulted ceiling at the center of the property. But this is also on a lower slope lot than ours, and their garage is at the lower level of the grade. In our situation, our garage is entirely below grade because when we get to the top of the existing flag, we are already four and a half feet below ground. There's a retaining wall at the top of the flag lot currently. Next slide, please. This is a three-story home, but it is terraced all the way up the hill. It's fine, they have the depth of the site to be able to accommodate the terracing. But they did not conform, or they would not be conforming, to the current sideyard height limit setbacks, which taper in off the side yard. So again, an example of a house that is existing and would probably need an exception were built today. Next slide. This is the home directly in front of Ella Street, 1141 Ella Street. This shares the driveway. That driveway is actually a part of 1141. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is a three-story home with the entire frontage of the home directly on the front property line, setback 20 feet from the property, sorry, setback 20 feet from the property line. It has a large vertical element on it worth noting. Next slide. A triplex. Next slide. And a duplex. Next slide, please. So the property is very steep. We've never doubted that, whichever cross-slope you calculate it, it's well over 20%. Some areas are 30%. It's incredibly steep. In order to deal with the steepness, which if this was a lot even being produced today, it would not be in conformance with current standards. They wouldn't be allowed to make a site like this anymore. It is basically almost non-buildable, and that's why the exceptions were requested. It's worth noting that on the left hand and the right hand side of this lot, that there are very large evergreen tree, groves of evergreen trees that will also help tie the house into the hillside. Next slide, please. There are many aspects of the hillside design standards. All of them need to be looked at in a whole, and so there were efforts here to be a good neighbor in the way we decided the home. These two circles represent significant buffers that are substantially, if not double, the required setbacks from the adjacent homes. They provide a buffer at the home in front of us, which gives them greater access to view shed and light, even though the primary views are towards Bishop's going the other direction. And next slide, please. We also angled the home away because there are great views from up on top of these lots. And by angling it, we allowed the occupant of 1151 to enjoy their garden terraces, not just the middle one, but also the one at the central one at the very top. 1121 has a basketball court at the top, so we switched and rotated the house away, and that preserved their views. It's worth noting that all these homes are eligible to have ADUs on them, and the only leftover spot is at the top where they would probably build them, just like the home at 1161 has just currently got approved for, an 800 square foot ADU at the rear of the parcel. Next slide, please. So hillside development standards. We did ask for a retaining wall exception. Next slide, please. We asked for a retaining wall exception specifically to these three locations. The first one is a portion of the wall at the driveway. It is 27 feet long, but it tapers from one foot to about eight and a half feet tall. So it's really, you know, two and a half feet out of conformance. It's also triangular, so it quickly comes back into compliance. Only about 13 feet are not in compliance. So we proposed a landscape median in front of it to grow some vegetation to help bring it back into conformance. The other two retaining walls noted on the left side of the screen in the blue lines are 12 feet tall, but again, they are also triangular in shape because they were terraced with landscaping in front of them. And the landscaping wells and the terracing are both ways that the Community Design Guidelines can also be met through an exception, and the ARSC supported that. Next slide, please. Here's an example. You can see that the entire garage is below grade. That green line indicates the existing grade at the living space on the second floor. It is almost entirely below grade. And the retaining wall to the right of it, you can see how small it is relative. It's also very deep in the back of the property, so its line of sight is almost negligible. Next slide, please. Downhill face of walls. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We did look, I think we're having some issues here with the slide. Next slide, please. I'd like to bank my time if possible. The hillside walls. Kyle, can you advance the slide? No. Uh-oh, it went really far. Back up, please. You'll see a rendering of the color board. There we go. So to resume, the downhill building walls. So yes, we are asking for an exception of the building wall. One of them is for the location of the stairwell. It is a vertical element, but the ARSC was fully supportive of the fact that it did break up the exterior elevation into multiple masses. And the other side is the medium beige box in the corner, which has a deep punch window in it. And with the articulation of the punch window and the C shape to it, the ARSC felt comfortable supporting it, indicating that it had so significant articulation to it. Next slide, please. We presented multiple images of the property, but here is one of them rendered out. You can see just the upper floor from down at street level, so regardless of how much articulation we even have on the lower floor, it would have a negligible effect on the upper floor. So we could push out 15 feet hypothetically, if it were feasible, but it's not. But it wouldn't change what we currently see. The other option would be to push the building further up the hill, another story, which would make it even taller and actually expose more surface, wall surface. So this is the most minimal exposure that we could achieve, doing part to the steep driveway and the existing conditions of the pitch of the site. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Kyle did mention the retaining walls and the downhill walls. I think his report did a good job explaining them. I want to mention that the ARSC specifically reviewed these at length and gave a five-to-zero approval with no exceptions granted. They noted that the retaining wall was only slightly out of conformance with the standard and that the exterior wall surfaces were highly varied in scale, color, material, solid versus void, texture. All of it broke up the general form of the structure, and that combination of design solutions did divide the massing of the house into smaller components, which we, the ARSC, also supported the intent and spirit of the standard. Next slide, please. The J101.6 gradient standards, it's not applicable for various reasons, but just as a point of context, that is typically applied to new tract developments that are large developments where you are grading an entire hillside. As an example, if we are in the range of 26 to 30% cross-slope, 90% of the hillside would have to be untouched. That was not applied to any property in that entire neighborhood. It would basically render all of the remaining lots untouchable. Our flag lot, the driveway, already accounts for the percentage of what we would be allowed to touch. It's also worth noting that that condition is part of the municipal code amendments to the building code, to the CBC. This project would be governed by the California Residential Code, and there is no amendment in the city standards regarding this grading in the amendment section for the CRC, which this, we can look it up if we need to. Next slide, please. Size of home. House is about 34, 3500 square feet. It's worth noting that if you applied an FAR of an R1 zone to this lot, we would comply with it. There is no FAR requirement on this lot, but if it did, we would comply with an R1. This is known to be a denser site to support denser living and larger structures. ADU is well-intended to be part of that. As it pertains to size, our two parcels have no limitation on the size of the structures that are allowed, and in terms of maximum development, this site could be further developed to accommodate two separate, two-bedroom, single-family homes, each with their own two garage, and then each of those would be entitled or allowed to have their own two-bedroom ADUs. So in terms of maximum potential, we are only about halfway there. Next slide, please. Lastly, the exceptions, suggesting that exceptions somehow indicate that people are ignoring the Community Design Guidelines. Throughout the entire design process, which began in about late August of 2019, we met multiple times with the planning department at the counter to review designs with Walter, Kyle Bell, and Kyle Van Mullen. We did tremendous research on the property. We walked the neighborhood. We got to know it very well, and here's a brief example. Straight up each house that we went by, each would require some exceptions. So, next slide, please. This is my last slide. So I've had the opportunity to work on, with Vellum Design Build for five years after I came back from the East Coast where I received my master's of architecture from Cornell University, and I have happened to notice that these parcels on these type of hill sites sit vacant for too long because they, they're are very hard to develop, and they need creative solutions. So as you review this project, please consider that it's been vacant for 20 years, and Dede and Beatrice Kop will be the eighth owner since the year 2000 to try to build something on this lot. And we would love to see a lot like this get tastefully developed rather than sprawling the city outward, and we feel our design is compatible with the eclectic Ella Street neighborhood. Next slide, please. There was one question from Michelle. She asked about three-car garage versus four. The additional spot was provided specifically for the ADU. Back, years back, the ADUs required to provide parking, which was a great intention, but the state stripped that away. It would be not a good neighbor thing to do to force the ADU's occupants to park down on the street and walk up the hillside, especially with groceries. So in terms of making the property accessible for the ADU occupants, one of the stalls is dedicated to the ADU, and the three are dedicated to the primary home. So we're providing off-street parking, which is an asset to the community, not a burden. And then I was asked by a commissioner or through Kyle, asked, mentioned a commissioner wanted to see a little animation we kind of put together. Next slide, please. If you could just click through these real quick, this is just the composite images of our home superimposed on Google Earth, and you can kind of see its scale in terms of massing and how much of it you would see relative to the existing homes in the neighborhood. And based off of this, I think it's pretty compelling that it's consistent, and the ARSC also felt so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have a rebuttal from the applicant?
Hold on, let me get his mic open. Mr. Gasky, you may have to unmute yourself if you would like to do a rebuttal. There we go.
Okay, the only thing I would say is the exceptions that are designed in this particular project are huge, and Mr. Esser himself said that the lot is a challenge to build on, but I think it is buildable within the exceptions, but maybe not that particular house. And I think the Planning Commission should take a very close look at approving the proposal in light of the significant exceptions and the entitlement that was granted. Thank you.
Thank you. I think now we may have questions of the applicant from the mission.
Chair Donakar, we do have a public comment at this time, I believe. Perhaps the attorney might be able to clarify if the questions come before the additional public comment.
I think we did ask for general public comment before, and so I could technically argue that all we had to do was allow it before, during deliberations, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't check again, just because it is a due process hearing.
Great. We do have one emailed comment in at this time, the, which I can read to you. This is from, it appears to be from the applicant, Dede and Beatrice Kop. "The COVID-19 pandemic has really turned the world upside down, especially for those who are over the age of 65, and we wanted to thank you for making the opportunity to review our project digitally. Beatrice and I moved our family to California in 1996, and we have been San Luis Obispo County residents since 2002. Some may know us as Pan Oliabol Restaurant owners for 15 years in Paso Robles and a few years in San Luis Obispo. Our vision is to build a multi-generational home where each generation can take care of each other, still keeping the privacy each one deserves. We, the grandparents, will retire and live under the same roof as our daughter and son-in-law and our grandchildren, which are our only family in the U.S. We chose the city of San Luis Obispo for its quality of life, small-town feel, but with all the necessary amenities. San Luis Obispo is also where our daughter and son-in-law work. After a long search, we are happy to have finally found with 1141 Ella the perfect property to build our family home. Sincerely, Dede and Beatrice Kop." And I do not see any additional questions or hands raised for public comment at this
So just in terms of process, I don't believe the planning commissioners have had a chance to ask any questions of the applicant if they wish to do so. Are there any questions of the applicant from planning commissioners? I don't see any hands, any indications. So the floor is open for deliberations by the commission. Are there any comments, any questions that commissioners would like to voice?
This is Commissioner Wilken, or Commissioner Khan can go first if he wishes. He had his hand up first, I think.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to compliment the staff on a clear and well-written staff report and analysis of the appeal issues and findings. I was persuaded by the staff arguments that the exceptions to the heights of the retaining walls and the building walls are justified based on code requirements and also based on the need to reduce grading and to reduce impacts to terrace hill, which would be consistent with the general plan, with the land use element, and also with the conservation and open space element. I think it's also in favor of the project, I think, is that what's being proposed does not seem to me to be out of character with the neighborhood. I walked, I walked the neighborhood, and I'm pretty familiar with the neighborhood, and it's, it is fairly eclectic, and there's a variety of house styles and sizes. And it's, it is fairly eclectic and there's a variety of house styles and sizes. In fact, it looks like some of the houses are larger, but it includes, like the applicant said, condominiums and single-family and houses and duplexes. Anyway, the point is that I don't think it's, what's being proposed is really out of character with the neighborhood. And besides, I don't think we're really, we normally don't limit sizes of single-family residences in an R2 zone. Also, I think of notice that the building height is well below the maximum. The lot coverage is less than half of what the maximum lot coverage is. So it, the project presents a small footprint compared to the site. And also the setback, the front setback is larger than required, and actually there's a fairly generous separation between the building in front of this project and the proposed project. So I support the staff's recommendation. I think their arguments are persuasive. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilken. Commissioner Khan?
Yeah, I too walked the site and took a look at the neighborhood and looked over the plans closely. And I agree with Mike, Mike pretty much, Commissioner Wilken pretty much expressed my views. I have designed and built quite a few hillside homes in my career, and it is not easy. And obviously with eight people owning the property for the last twenty years, it's been a challenge. And I think the architect and designers did a good job on using the site, getting your setbacks well. That house could just overlook that house below him and hang over it, but he set it back a little bit. And I think they did a good job. I did have a question about the garage, and I'm glad they said one of the parking spots was for the ADU, because I looked at the ADU and it definitely did need a parking spot. So I'm glad they had that. So I support the project as it is, and I support denying the appeal. So I have.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hopkins, do you have any questions, any comments?
I know, I think Mike and, or Commissioner Wilken and Commissioner Khan mirrored a lot of my similar feelings for reasons to deny the appeal.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Well, I would like to say I do second the comments that Mike and Steve have made already, and those were already seconded by Michael Hopkins. But it, it really seems to me there is public benefit to a very creative solution to a very complex geography on this site. And I think we really see a good chance for infill actually done right in a way that it still honors Terrace Hill. And I think really it keeps the heights in control. So I think this is a very good solution. And I can see why the development director favored it.
Thank you. Commissioner Quincy?
I don't have any additional comments other than what's been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoresman?
Yeah, I really have mixed opinions about, about this, this item. I see some of the arguments and agree with some of the arguments of the appellant. And I see that the applicant has clearly put a lot of energy and care into creating a building on this lot that's, that's difficult to build on and tries to take care of the environmental aspects as well as the neighborhood aspects. I think my, my biggest concern with not denying or voting to, to deny this appeal is that what was, what was said by the appellant about the size of the walls, I can, I can appreciate the exemptions for the retaining walls as they are, you know, just slightly above what is allowed. But the concern about the downhill-facing walls being almost double what is normally allowed in the zoning regulations. And it appears to me, based on the previous decisions about this, that those exemptions are basically granted because they like the appearance of the building. Not to say that that isn't an important factor, but we also have established that this is a eclectic neighborhood. And I walked the street today myself, and you know, there's craftsmen houses, there's very modern houses, there's very farmhouse-looking houses, there's sort of Tuscan-style stucco buildings, it's kind of all over the map. So just approving the exemptions beyond what coding regulations allows, just because we like the appearance, that, that's the part that I have a little bit of trouble with. So I'm, I'm actually still kind of on the fence, and I'm curious to hear if anybody has any thoughts, any other commissioners have any thoughts about, about my concerns.
This is Commissioner Wilken. I would just note that part of the reason, or maybe the primary reason for granting the exception to the downhill wall building height is that it would prevent or reduce or, or avoid the need to grade further into the hillside. And so therefore helps protect the Terrace Hill. So that's, that's, I think, what the staff is arguing, and that argument makes sense to me.
I, I too walked the site yesterday, and, and I too shared Commissioner Shoresman's concern about the facade and felt myself thinking, well, it's really hidden behind the house in front. But, but the house in front is always going to be there. And if the building were by itself with that frontage, I think I would have some concerns about the ways in which the building related to neighbors related to the streetscape. And so, and, and the fact that some of the retaining walls are so high, I'm sure they're structurally sound, but it leaves me a little uneasy because we are in earthquake territory, we are, you know, somewhat susceptible, and I know you can engineer for strength, but is, is this something we ought to be encouraging through exceptions? That was my take on the matter.
I had that similar concern. I'm not an engineer, but I voiced that to Kyle as well, and he assured me that, that the engineering was sound and that we didn't need to worry about such things. But I, I did have that concern as well. The other, one last thing that I'd like to say about this, and it's sort of in response to my initial question or note about the, the number of spaces, of garage spaces, I think Kyle mentioned that this type of residence would normally be allowed two, and that the third space was a guest space because of the flagship lot. And I wonder why then there's an additional fourth spot when that guest space be for the, for the ADU, rather than adding a fourth, a fourth garage spot? But that's not my, that's not my biggest concern. I do just think that it's, it maybe wasn't necessary or required to have that, but I guess if they chose to use the square footage that way, that's, that's their prerogative. My, my bigger concern is going above the exceptions without what I feel like is, I don't know, necessary, for lack of a better word.
Well, I'll chime in if I can, just a little bit more, because I do think that in infill, there is a bunch of issues. And often infill isn't anywhere near as neighborly as it ought to be. And sometimes it comes down to setbacks, sometimes it comes down to height, sometimes it comes down to sort of building coverage. And I think in all of those three factors are, are handled in a way that I think is very smart and would be a good example for this neighborhood and other neighborhoods with, with flag lots that go up a hill like this. That's a very steep hill and a long hill, and to require, and so, speaking about the parking, I've definitely been a fan of as little parking as possible, trying to move us more and more to fewer cars. But the requirements are the minimum, not the maximum in this case. And when this is up a long, steep hill, you need the ability, at least for one guest, particularly an elderly guest, not to have to walk up the hill. There's no funicular or any other thing that's going to save the day here, I don't think. And the same goes for the ADU. It really needs a dedicated parking space, not the guest parking space for the main residence. That, that's going to create a real conflict, it seems to me. So I really think this is a good infill solution, and I think the balancing act has been handled pretty well. I really think there's public benefit to this kind of solution. So that's why I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from any commissioners? I see none. Commissioner Quincy are out of sight, but I trust you don't need to make any comments at this point.
No comments, thank you.
And so I'd like to see if there is somebody who would like to make a motion on this, Commissioner Khan?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to drop the draft resolution and deny the appeal and uphold the community developments director, a design review approval of the single-family residential project on a sloped lot in a R2 zone.
I'll second. This is Commissioner Wilken.
Thank you. Will the deputy city clerk please call the roll of motion?
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilken?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman? Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Chair Donakar?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to item three on our agenda. This item before us is to review a project on the west edge of Los Osos Valley Road at Cal-Wakine, the intersection. It is a transfer of right-of-way, acquisition of a right-of-way from Caltrans to the city of San Luis Obispo. Could Associate Planner Kyle Bell please present this report?
Chairman Donakar, this is Michael Codron, and I'll just jump in. And I believe we have Chelsea Klepper here to make a presentation for you. And I see also Matt Horn, who's the Public Works Director, is, is online here with us. So I'd like to see if either of them have any comments, or if Chelsea just wants to go ahead and make the presentation. This is a general plan conformity report, so it's a little different than what the planning commission used to, is used to seeing, but it's any time that the city acquires property or disposes of property for that matter, there are, there's a requirement in state law to make a finding, that the planning commission make a finding that it's consistent with the general plan. So that's the purpose of this hearing, and then I'll turn it over either to Matt or Chelsea, whoever wants to jump in.
Hi, Michael. Chelsea here. Kevin, are we good with the presentation, or are you going to flip slides?
You should be able to have control of it now, yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chelsea Klepper. I'm with the Public Works Department. And as Michael introduced, we're here today to review a general plan conformity for the acquisition of a portion of right-of-way adjacent to Los Osos Valley Road from Caltrans to The property is located on the western edge of Los Osos Valley Road near the Highway 101 interchange. It's located between the southbound on-ramp and just past Cal-Wakine Road. The parcel size is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet, and it includes street improvements, including Los Osos Valley Road improvements and Cal-Wakine improvements, and frontage improvements such as sidewalk curb and gutter, as well as some landscaping. The next slide is an exhibit showing you an aerial overview of the parcel in question. As you can see, it runs next to Los Osos Valley Road and crosses across Cal-Wakine and encompasses some of the signal, crosswalk, sidewalk curb and gutter, some bike lane, and even some street improvements. Reason for this acquisition is for the city to use this property as right-of-way. It's currently Caltrans right-of-way left over from a previous time when they thought they were going to need this right-of-way for the US 101 and Los Osos Valley Road interchange project. Since that time, the interchange has been completed, and additionally, Cal-Wakine Road was realigned crossing over this parcel. This property needs to be relinquished from Caltrans and acquired by the city in order to keep Cal-Wakine Road access to through, to those through businesses, and for the city to maintain sidewalk and road improvements along LOVR. In the report, we found that this is in compliance with the general plan policies listed below, two of the land use element policies and two of the circulation element policies. All these policies go with neighborhood connections, open links, and managing our city's street networks. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission is to adopt a resolution which determines and reports to the city council that the proposed acquisition conforms to the general plan. The findings include that the acquisition of land will not harm the general health, safety, and welfare of people living or working in the vicinity because the proposed right-of-way is consistent with the general plan and the existing neighborhood pattern. That concludes my presentation on this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go back to any exhibits if you need further clarification. Thank you.
Do commissioners have any questions of staff? And thank you for this slide.
Oh, no, it didn't, it didn't flip through, I don't think. I'm sorry.
I'll ask, I'll ask one question.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
So just understanding the, the history of this, I guess I'm just curious, sort of from a transportation point of view of what the future holds for this intersection. It appears to me to be an intersection where there is simply not enough land for anything resembling a cloverleaf, a typical kind of approach to moving traffic at different levels and not having so much cross-traffic and cross-turning and all of that. And it also appears that we may have had difficulty with enough funding and enough, because it took a long time to kind of get all this through. And so by the time it opens, it looks as if we've jammed up and we don't yet have San Luis Ranch to compete with, for driving along that area. I guess I have to assume that Caltrans knows it's never going to need this parcel of land to widen or add anything to deal with the congestion that we've got on this interchange on Los Osos Valley Road. It's a pie in the sky question.
Yeah, I can try and provide a little bit more background. So this is really kind of a leftover piece from the original designs. So when, in back in 2004, the city actually requested that Caltrans relinquish this right of way, but there was a lot of still development happening for the overchange. And so this little sliver of property serves Caltrans no benefit because their on-ramp is farther down towards the bottom of the picture of the page. So Caltrans would never utilize this for future improvements because of where Calawaken is located. So Calawaken would have to be relocated in order for them to extend their on-ramp area. And Caltrans has recently brought this back to the surface because their freeway right of way is not allowed to cross a local road. So they would have to, we would have to realign Calawaken and act for fence off the road. So the city and Caltrans are both in agreement that it should be city maintained because it's our local street and then our frontage improvements. And where Caltrans picks up the responsibility is about midway on the turn lane to the on-ramp. So from the turn lane to the on-ramp, that's all Caltrans maintained. And I'm not sure if that answered all your question, but
we don't have a lot of options for the future.
Oops, sorry. It's Michael Codron. I just wanted to add a little bit of information. Chelsea, this is really helpful background. But two things that are in the works, one is some signal timing adjustments between the Caltrans signal at the off-ramp, the the southbound off-ramp, and then the Calawaken Los Osos Valley Road signal. So there's some optimization of signal timing that's happening there that will help with the congestion. And then another feature that's going to be installed here soon is a meter on the southbound on-ramp. And so that'll be the first in the city of San Luis Obispo, but we will have metered on-ramp there at Los Osos Valley Road. So just a couple of things that are happening in conjunction with some of the other development projects in the area. Avalor Ranch, San Luis Ranch, Frum Ranch will will pay into their share of those improvements. And those are all things to manage congestion at that intersection.
Thank you.
So do we, if there are there any more comments by planning commissioners? Should I call you by name, or perhaps you could raise your hands if you want to talk? Commissioner Quincy, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Did we receive any, sorry, Commissioner Shoresman?
I didn't want to cut anybody off, but I would just say that I'm I'm fully supportive of this. I think as that area grows and there are more, is more residential traffic in the area, this seems like a really great way to have easy access and ownership to that piece of property so that we can make that area more walkable and bikeable. Right now, there's virtually no sidewalk there except going over the overpass. And it's a little bit like a game of chicken on a bike, trying to navigate those two intersections. And so this seems like it would just create some more flexibility for the city to make some improvements there. So that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have comments to make? My apologies.
Commissioner Wilken, Commissioner Wilken, I had a comment, but I just wanted to remind the chair that we need to see if there's any public comments first.
Yes, I was going to, that's the next item, I think. Do we have any public comments? So are there any other comments from commissioners? So Deputy City Clerk, have we, have we received any public comments on this item?
We do not have any public comments on this item.
So hearing none, I think we're in a position to make a motion on this item.
This is Commissioner Wilken. I just wanted to make one comment, actually two. First of all, it appears to be in conformity with the general plan. And the second comment is to the Community Development Director that I would suggest, in the interest of streamlining, that these kind of conformity determinations be considered as consent items in the future.
Thank you. Noted.
Sounds like a good idea.
So with that, I'll make a motion to find that the proposed acquisition of property is in conformity with the general plan. And adopt the resolution to that effect.
Thank you.
And this is Commissioner Khan. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. Will the Deputy City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilken? Oh, I'm so sorry. It was Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Wilken, you made the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. You vote yes. Sorry. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Chair Donakar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I think there are two item four of our agenda then today, which is staff updates and agenda forecast. Can Senior Planner Brian Lovell provide the staff update?
Sure. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. I'll just kind of go out here, your next few meetings, give you a brief update on some upcoming agenda items. So your next meeting is on July 8th, and there's a couple of items on that agenda. 1144 Choro, the six-story mixed-use building. That includes 30,000 square feet of office, commercial space, 50 residential units. And that includes a review of a PD overlay to take the building to a maximum height of 75 feet. It also includes a review of the mitigated negative declaration. And that would be a recommendation to the city council. The other item you will have that evening is the Climate Action Plan and Greenhouse Gas Emissions Threshold Document, and that will be a recommendation to the city council. The next meeting on July 22nd, you have the dual-brand hotel in the San Luis Ranch specific plan. That's a 200-room hotel, and that's a development plan approval that would be for potentially for final approval. And then you have the housing element update as well, and that would be the the Planning Commission's final review of that item. And that would be a recommendation to the council. That item would be heard at the city council on September 1st. The next couple of meetings, there's the August 12th meeting, and the 13th is also reserved for getting through the Frum Ranch specific plan item. Starting with on the 12th, there's actually two items. There's starting the Frum Ranch specific plan. And then there's an item in the Orkut mixed, in the Orkut area specific plan for a mixed-use project with 15 units. So it's looking like on the 12th, the Frum Ranch specific plan would start with, the Planning Commission would start with review of the specific plan and the vesting tentative track map. And then right now, the thought is that on the the special meeting date of the 13th, the Planning Commission would go through the final environmental impact report. So that's all I have for the for the agenda forecast, unless you have any any more questions on those.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Khan?
So on our future calendars, we should put the 12th and the 13th as two back-to-back meetings?
That's correct.
Okay, I just like to put placeholders on my calendar, so I'll do that.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I I think that completes the agenda items for today. Our next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. It will be by teleconference. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to a close. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. Thanks for letting me join.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.